If only I could. Is it dark chocolate?
Counselor.
Free, baby.
Okay, we're on. Where's the agenda?
Two times in a row, what's up?
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Township of Springfield Planning Board to order. Adequate notice has been given in the Sunshine Laws. Notice was published on September 12th, 2019, in the Star Ledger, which is the official newspaper of the Township of Springfield for 2019, and was posted on the Annex Building on September 13th, 2019. Let's have a salute to the flag, please.
My ladies to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is that grace? Yes. Okay. Can we please have a roll call?
Committeeman Richard Huber.
Oh, I don't have them.
Mr. Richard Huber's here.
Mr. Richard Huber?
Newly elected.
Newly elected Mr. Richard Huber?
Here.
Here.
Thank you. Mr. David Barnett?
That would be the honorable David Barnett.
Honorable Mr. David Barnett?
Here.
Mr. Andrew Schwartz?
I object to the last statement. Present.
Mr. Jerry Fernandez is absent. Ms. Sylvia Ann Grisbowski?
I'm here.
Thank you. Ms. Carolyn Singer is absent. Mr. Scott Wisna?
Present with no special title.
Thank you. Ms. Marissa Ruggiero is absent. Mr. Brian Brendel is absent. Vice Chair Sharon Tessel?
Here.
And Chairman Jeff Kryker?
Yes.
We have a form.
Perfect. Do you have a copy of the resolution?
We do not.
So we do not. Did we get it?
We did.
We did, okay. Perfect. Okay, good. Okay, so we have a very, 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 very busy agenda. So the first thing on the agenda right now is for a resolution. Everyone saw it on the Google Drive. It was 49 Evergreen LLC corn span, which is 15 Christie Lane, block 2001, lots 34 and 40. This was a very, very minor subdivision the board heard last week, two lots. Anyone have a chance to review it? Any questions, concerns?
No.
No, I don't see any. Can I entertain a motion?
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for the...
What?
Go ahead. Oh, hey, you go ahead.
No, I'll second.
For the approval of the Resolution of Application 9 dash 2019, ask for a minor subdivision on 49 Evergreen Avenue.
I second.
Have a roll call, please.
Mr. David Barnett?
Yes.
She's seconded.
I know, because she wasn't here.
Oh. Yes.
Uh, Mr. Andrew Schwartz?
I'm refused.
That's right. Mr. Wisna?
Uh, approved.
Vice Chair Tessel? Chairman Kryker?
Yes.
You both are guests.
Perfect. Okay, two little housekeeping before we do the applications. It's that time of the year again where our RFPs will be sent out very shortly.
Counselor, please settle down.
It's okay now.
It's that time of the year when we do RFPs. Typically, we have a subcommittee that reviews the RFPs and then brings it back to the board on January 2nd for the first meeting in January for review. So the RFP committee, I believe, this year is going to be Sharon and David. Is that okay with you guys?
Sure is.
The board have any concerns?
Well, I thought we could disappoint people. Could we just appoint them? Share people if you want them. You don't have to.
Doing what?
But can we just...
No, we have to have an RFP process.
Yeah, so the goal will be that David, myself, and Sharon will review the RFPs, come back, make recommendations to the board for the night that we do a reorganization. The board can think that suggestion or reject that suggestion and review it. The RFPs are available for every member of the board as well as every member of the public to review, so it's not stopping anything whatsoever. Okay, the next question, sort of housekeeping, is we typically... I've been on this board for 14, 15 years or so, and we typically always met every Wednesday. That was our regular day. We've moved it around a bunch of times. I wanted to propose, starting the first Monday of every month, being our meeting. I think our professionals didn't have any concerns with it. I wanted to kind of poll the board to see if that's something... It would start effective January 6th or something or so, once we kind of set the schedule. Mr. Schwartz?
I'm fine with it.
I'm good.
Glenn, you were okay as our professional?
I was.
Yes, it's good. I'm okay. David?
Just send me an invite from my calendar.
Okay, you will.
I'll be there.
Glenn's okay with it?
Yeah. Glenn was okay with it, and I was okay with the night that you picked it last year, too.
All right. From here, yes.
You'll be alive, don't worry.
January 6th?
Well, it'll be the first Wednesday of every month. First Monday, first Monday of every month. First Monday.
It's fine.
It's fine.
Fine. Okay, so for the record, that's what we will go to speak with the clerk. Okay, next thing is we have three applications tonight. So first application is application 11 dash 2019. This is Mario Ferreira. If I pronounce it wrong, I apologize. 15 Clinton Avenue, block 802, lot 10. This is for a minor subdivision with bulk variances for two lots. Counselor?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Attorney Rosemary Stone Doherty, address of 54 Main Street in Chad, New Jersey, on behalf of the applicant, Mario Fiera, in regards to the subject property known as 15 Clinton Avenue, also known as block 802, lot 10. We're here in front of the board tonight to request a minor subdivision with two mirror image variances, making a total of four required C variances in connection with the minor subdivision proposed, to subdivide the existing oversized lot into two smaller lots to allow for a single-family home to be built on each spot and the existing home to be raised and the existing garage. With that being said, I have with me tonight my client's engineer, my client's architect, hopefully will show before we're done, or we will move on without him, and I have the applicant. So at this point in time, I'd like to call Mr. Frederick C. Miola, the applicant's engineer, to testify.
Sure. I always like to swear this guy. You swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth to proceed before the board tonight, so if you got...
Yes, I do.
What is your name, sir?
Frederick C. Miola.
Spell your last name, Fred.
M.E.O.L.I.
And Fred, you're licensed what in this state?
Licensed as an engineer, plan surveyor, planner, and state engineer.
And your licenses are valid as of tonight, Fred?
They're valid in current.
And Fred, by whom are you employed?
I am president of F.C. Miola, engineering surveying and subdivision, site of the property tomorrow.
And you've been doing it for how many years, sir?
If I have to say that.
No, you do not. You're under oath, so we don't want to spot you.
It's over 40 years.
Okay. Does the board have any problem? I don't know that Fred's ever appeared, but I certainly have seen him a fair amount of the time.
Okay, I think we'll pass him.
And Mr. Miola, tonight you'll be testifying primarily in engineering, but also some qualified planning issues as well, correct?
Yes.
So do you mind, Mr. Engineer, if you move the plans over there?
Yep.
So that way the public, some public...
Yeah.
Fred, while you're doing that, the plans that you have mounted on the board, were they the same as were submitted as part of the application?
I should hope they are. We should be up to revision 9/5/19.
9/5/19. Okay. And Fred, just to keep this kind of moving along, because I know how the chairman likes to run his meetings. You had a chance to review the reports prepared by our engineer and our planner, is that correct?
Yes, I have.
Other than getting into variance testimony and the like, do you have any problems with anything that either of the gentlemen called out?
No, absolutely not.
Okay. When you do your testimony, talk about the fence, too.
Okay, Fred, just to highlight for the board, this is in the S60 zone, correct?
Um, yes, it is.
Can you just walk through real quick what the existing conditions are and what is proposed?
I try to put myself in a spot where I don't block anybody. The property is shown in the center of the upper portion of sheet one. There's an existing home and a very large garage on the property. It's on the northwest side of the property. The proposal is to take down all the improvements that are on the property, redevelop it with two smaller homes. That's more in keeping with the neighborhood. The lot presently is 12,320 square feet. Proposal is to subdivide the two lots into lot 10.01 will be 6,116 square feet. Lot 10.02 will be 6,204 square feet.
And Fred, by doing this subdivision with the proposed footprints and houses that have been submitted, the overall lot coverage actually decreased as a result, correct?
Yes. Presently today, with all of the impervious coverage, the very large garage and the home, our coverage on the property is 46.1 square feet. With the two homes, with the two driveways, the little porches, we're at 33.5 square feet. So we've basically reduced our coverage by 13%.
With that being said, as an engineer, do you feel that the plan that you put together once grading plans and so forth are submitted, is it going to improve any lot coverage, sorry, lot drainage and runoff conditions on the site?
No, we don't anticipate any problems with the grading and the drainage. We have a preliminary grading plant for the board's benefit on here. Basically, the driveways and the homes are all coming out to Clinton Avenue, and then just the rear yard is going towards the rear of the property.
Now, you heard Mr. Chairman indicate that you surround the fences. Can you locate where the fences on the property along the rear?
Yeah, the fence is right along the rear property line, and as you come along our northwest property line, it comes on a little bit of an angle. It's on our property in the rear, and it crosses the property line down near Clinton Avenue.
And I believe one of the photographs that was in the engineer's memo that was sent to you, Fred, had a picture of the fence, correct?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, if I could be so presumptuous, is your concern regarding the gate that's on the fence?
The gate, and it's in disarray. I think we should look to, if the board acts favorably, to put a new fence back up there. So that way, you know, number one, it's privacy for whoever's going to live there, and number two, it's privacy for the school, you know, not to see what's going on in that area.
Yes. And we have no problem with that.
Right. And the applicant would stipulate that they would certainly replace the fence. They would prefer to replace the fence as well.
Yeah, you can work with the, with our engineer on what's the appropriate for a fence, because, you know, I don't think we need to get involved in the colors and stuff.
That's why I got Mike.
That's why we got Mike.
And Mr. Miola, can you just highlight quickly under the planning groups as far as the support of the C2 areas being requested with this application?
Yeah, I mean, I think we hit the first one, that this project is going to have less of an impervious coverage than when we started, which is a definite benefit to drainage and runoff, and also the look in the neighborhood. It's not going to look as massive with all the impervious coverage. But the other thing is, looking at the neighborhood...
Yeah, no, I just...
Taking all...
So Fred, just to be clear, in your hand, you're again referring to the engineer's and all these exhibits.
Actually, I got my tax map, but it's the same thing as his, except mine has my writing on it.
So it's not a new exhibit for the...
No. No, I'm going to refer to the tax map in the upper left corner of the page. If we take Clinton Avenue from the last residential house out to Mountain Avenue, and even if we include the three lots on Mountain Avenue, the two that are owned by the dentist and the mechanic across the street, that's a total of 23 lots, not counting our lot. Out of those 23 lots, we have five that are in the range of 6,000 square foot. We have 11 in the range of 5,000 to 5,500, and then we have four conforming lots, not counting the non-conforming lots in the... Well, not non-conforming, they're in a different zone. They're in a commercial zone. So within the neighborhood, we're talking about 19 out of the 23 lots are in the same category size as our property.
Or less.
Or less.
Because both of these lots are proposed to be at least 6,000 or 7,000.
Yes. So I think, you know, neighborhoods grow up differently sometimes, and it doesn't mean it's bad, it just means it's different. And this is one of those neighborhoods that have smaller lots, they don't quite fit the zoning, but it's hard to zone an entire town, especially towns that had gotten developed prior to municipal land use. Act came in around 1939, 1940 was the first one.
Now, also important, Fred, is on that tax map that the engineer was kind of left to attach to his memo, a majority of those lots are also 50-foot in width as well, correct?
Yes.
So it's not just being undersized, but they're also compatible as the lot width as well, correct?
Yes, they're 50-footers. Across the street, almost every one is a 50-footer. Down at the end of the block on our side of the street, there's four 40-footers.
So again, the building footprints that are proposed in the house plan that the applicant proposed, combined with all front yard, rear yard, side yard, and building with a lot coverage of 10%, the variances requested here tonight, with the mirror image for lot width on both lots and the overall lot size, correct?
Correct.
And it's your testimony as both a planner and engineer that this, the benefits of this application outweigh any detriment to the town's own planning or ordinance?
Yes, I believe that.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Okay, perfect. Just hang out there until I like to go to Mike Keenan.
Sure.
Kind of talk through this with the board before we open up for questions for the board.
Sure. So I would say from a planning standpoint, you heard the testimony from the applicant. Dealing with the subdivision in a single-family residential context, you're definitely focused on what is the impact to the character of the neighborhood. And I think the evidence on the record is that there's actually a substantial number of undersized lots in this immediate area. So the question for the board is whether this subdivision, which would bring or create two lots which are presumably in keeping with the size of the existing lots in the neighborhood, is that some benefit to the general welfare, to the neighborhood? Does it better preserve the character of the neighborhood than a redevelopment of the site with potentially a larger house and in keeping the existing lot size? I mean, that's essentially it under the C2 criteria.
From a planning standpoint, it makes sense.
Well, I, you know, that's really up to the board. Obviously, the testimony's on the record, it's indisputable that there's other lots which are the same or smaller than the proposed lots in the neighborhood. So albeit that the, you know, the ordinance does require larger lot sizes, but the character of the neighborhood from a planning standpoint is really the paramount concern.
Okay, perfect.
I would just piggyback that this...
You were talking to the microphone.
I would piggyback that Clinton Avenue wasn't in the S60 zone until only a couple years ago. It wasn't in a residential zone because it was one of the older streets. If you look at the tax map, you see on the north side, about midway, I think it's lots 601, 602. So they were previously subdivided, although they predate my time on the board, but perhaps somebody on the board may recollect that. Relatively newer house there. So it is not unprecedented that there is a subdivision on Clinton Avenue. The last time we had a subdivision, and Mr. Huber would remember this, Councilman Huber would remember this, we have a minimum requirement to obtain 6,000 square feet over and above the specific lot requirement. They are meeting after this.
Which is good.
From an engineering perspective, I just think the parking, you know, as outlined in my memo, doesn't meet RSIS, so there needs to be some discussion.
Okay. Do you want to take that before we...
Yeah, and we'll be happy to meet with the engineer and work it out, and we are going to comply with RSIS.
So you've agreed to the fence and finishing everything in his letter. So I have a question, but I'm going to open it up to the board before going. So, Mr. Schwartz, do you want to...
Well, I guess my concern here is while we're calling this each of the proposed lots having a 50-foot width, that's only at the street. And in the back, they're actually substantially less wide. They're only 31 feet, which is not keeping with the neighborhood. It's less than any other house in the neighborhood. So you don't have a square lot here or rectangular?
No, we don't have a square lot. We didn't start with a square lot, and we had kicked around the idea of making one parallel and the other one smaller. It made more sense to split it down the middle. So yes, you're absolutely right. The lot is, it's not even trapezoidal, what is it called? I can't remember. It's been too long since I've had geometry.
Hot shake.
Hot shake. Thank you.
But Fred, just piggybacking on that, even though the rear of the property does come down and narrow, the overall lot size is still at the 6,000 or higher, which is substantially higher than the majority of the lots in the neighborhood, even that old subdivision.
Can you talk into the microphone, because there are people sometimes...
And can you ask a question instead of testifying, please?
Yes. Fred, in following up with that question, the property is, even with the subdivision and the back of it being narrow, is it still substantially larger than the majority of the lots in the neighborhood?
It is still larger than the majority of the lots in the neighborhood. You heard my category, 19 of the lots were 6,000 square foot or less, we're 6,200. You know, presently, this lot is the largest lot in the neighborhood, excessively larger than all the other lots.
And Fred, I know we had a discussion before about not necessarily presuming that lots 6.02 and 6.01 was in fact a subdivision, correct? Because we were unsure when we requested with the town if that had in fact been a subdivision, correct?
Correct.
But those lots, as well as other lots adjacent to it, are actually all 40-foot in width, correct?
Correct.
So even though the front starts at 50 and narrows back, there are other lots in the neighborhood that are less than 50 as well, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sharon?
Nothing.
So the only concern I have, which is, you know, driving down Mountain Avenue and having the characteristic of the neighborhood is all, I don't know, Keenan helped me, 15 to 20-foot high houses, plus or minus, and having two homes that are 35 feet in there. So when I hear, when we hear from your architect, I want to kind of talk through, we don't have to decide now, but maybe limiting the height of the homes. I mean, we kind of hear from Keenan about that, to maybe 30 to kind of buffer some of the, so they're not towering when you're driving down Mountain Avenue and you're seeing the heights of the homes. Well, can you talk through that? I just wanted to throw that out there.
I don't specifically have anything to add other than what was already said. I do think that, I do agree that this comes down to the character of the neighborhood, and we also have to consider that the neighborhood is also Mountain Avenue and some other areas that wouldn't necessarily be on Clinton. So I do agree with you, Mr. Chair. I'm interested in hearing the architect's side. I don't particularly know yet if this meets the character of the neighborhood in my mind. I'd be interested to hear from any residents. I see a lot of people here. I'd like to hear their opinion, whether they think it does.
I just don't like the backyard being 32 feet or something, whatever it was going to be. Those, granted, they're 40 and 50. You're going from 50 to 30, 32, 30, whatever it is.
At what point...
Right, we still like that.
I just don't like that.
At what point does it narrow from the backyard standpoint? Like, is it, you know, if you kind of go down, when you cut it in point, what point does it, you know, third the way through, like?
Immediately.
What?
It's a gradual, from 50 transitioning to the 31.
It's 31?
That doesn't bother me.
Yeah, 62 feet currently divided by...
Yeah. I personally, that doesn't bother me too much, just as David said.
It's still improving lot coverage, and they're not up against side and rear yards, right?
Yeah, they're not going closer to the high school, they're still maintaining the rear, so from my standpoint, I don't...
The board would discuss.
Yeah, that was going to be my comment. It's right now the biggest lot, and they're going to make it the smallest lot.
No, there are other, there are other lots that are smaller.
There are lots that are smaller across the street.
From that standpoint, it's not, it's not that dissimilar to the rest of the lots. I'm more concerned with the actual structure.
Yeah, and maybe...
Fred, are you just quickly, I don't think they're looking for a perfect condo, but...
No, I think, let me just have from Mr. Wisna before you go.
You know, I don't have an issue with the rear, the width of the backyards. I think probably more of my questioning is going to come down when the plans presented for the individual houses as far as driveway placement, you know, just some of the, I'd like to see landscaping at the back between the backyard and the, and the school, but, you know, we can address those issues as you present that portion of the plan.
We have no problem with the landscaping. I think there was a comment from one of the professionals about that, who we wanted to work with, and come up with a nice attractive landscape.
Perfect. Okay. Any questions on the board from this witness? So from the public standpoint, I'm going to hear their entire case, and then we'll open up the public, so that way it's, you guys will have the time. Is your architect not here yet?
No, so we'll be calling the applicant to testify, walking through his own plans.
Sure, but at a certain point in time, they have to move on, because we don't have any...
No, I'm good.
Okay. So stay put. Yeah, we'd love to hear from them. I don't know what more the applicant's going to add, because I think the board gets it, but you would want to put him on.
Well, if the board would like, I mean, it's up to you, counsel, and Mr. Chairman. I mean, the applicant is the one who commissioned the plans, he's the one who's going to be building the houses.
Sure, let's have him.
So maybe in lieu of the architect, okay, his architect's coming from Bergen County, so I'm just a little concerned.
Yeah, all right, let's have him come up for a minute.
This is a company?
Before you, before you talk, Keenan, what would be a reasonable height, given the neighborhood, the characteristics of the neighborhood? Because I think that, from an, the architect's not here, I mean, they have to meet all the conditions with the likeness things, where they have to look different. I mean, I don't think that, we're looking at the plans here unless the board has any questions per se with the plans, but what would be a reasonable height for us to impose a condition if we're going to...
Well, I think you have to keep in mind in the S60 zone that 35 feet is the maximum in two and a half stories. And as I review these plans, it appears that they're at two stories for both of the houses, and one is approximately 31 feet, and, well, they're both, they're both around 30 to 31 feet. So they're under the height that's permitted for the zone. And really what's driving that is just the pitch of the roof. I mean, that's essentially it. So, you know, the governing body has determined that 35 feet is the appropriate height, and that's pretty common for single-family areas. You know, I think you should take a close look at the architectural plans, you know, if you feel that the pitch of the roof is too extreme, and I don't know if there's any way to adjust that, I mean, that would be up to the board's discretion, but as I see it, you know, they're well below the height that's permitted for the zone.
Well, that being said, the governing body also said 60-foot width.
That's true.
So if we start going with what the governing body said, then this application's going to fail on its face. Do we know the height of the house on lot nine?
No. I don't have the specific height of that.
So I was there yesterday, and obviously I was not testifying, but they were in the 20s. I mean, like, they weren't...
That was my understanding, too.
This is going to be secret.
These houses, these two new houses are going to tower over the rest of that neighborhood.
Yeah, we want to also promote the new development, but we also want to constrict where it's going to make them where you can't build out the homes. So, I mean, 30, I was thinking, and I want to hear Keenan's standpoint, but is 30 a reasonable number? I mean, they're proposing 31, 32, or whatever it was I saw in the letter.
No, I don't have the specific height of that.
So I was there yesterday, and obviously, I was not testifying, but they were in the 20s, I mean, like, they weren't...
That was my understanding, too.
This is going to be secret.
These houses, these two new houses are going to tower over the rest of that neighborhood.
Yeah, we want to also promote the new development, but we also want to constrict where it's going to make them where you can't build out the homes. So, I mean, 30, I was thinking, and I want to hear Keenan's standpoint, but is 30 a reasonable number? I mean, they're proposing 31, 32, or whatever it was, I saw in the letter. I wanted to hear the board from a standpoint, I don't think it can, you know, we can say lower, but then we want to make them so they're nice, people can move in and enjoy, and promote the development growth.
Well, that's the balance.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, while you two were discussing, the engineer and the applicant, the applicant's willing to stipulate that he's willing to change the roof design to seven by 12, which will help...
Yeah, the roof is 10 by 12 feet, crossing the curb to the white house. So if we drop it to seven on 12, you're going to drop that roof to about 30.
So you'd be under 30. So we can call it under 30.
27, 28, probably.
Yeah, so we would just call it under 30, I would think. Because I'd want you to have to come back and say, oh, it's 28.6, and we have that problem either.
And we appreciate that.
To come back, I mean, does the board agree that dropping it at least approves, potentially, if the board acts favorably, then to have 35? I mean, I'm just thinking about driving down Mountain Avenue and seeing.
The big difference.
The big difference. You guys good with that?
35 would be a hard, yeah.
So why don't you give us a little bit overview of what you're trying to do, and then...
Sure, can we square in, Mr. Chairman?
Raise your right hand. The other right hand. Do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth of proceedings before the board ties up, you got?
Yes.
What is your name, sir?
Mario.
Mario, just spell your last name, please.
M R I O.
Okay, Counselor.
Mario, if you can, come over here, I'll hold the mic for you. Can you just kind of walk the board through your House Plan 1? Just highlight the materials that you've seen on the house?
On this side of the house, we have kind of a porch, and we have the vinyl siding with a, with a, with this other siding that's a little bit different on this house. Then if you go onto the front, I think the criteria of the house, like you guys said, if it doesn't fit, the roof doesn't fit, we can drop that roof and meet your criteria that you guys are asking for, but I think the house itself, the front, I think, if it's the neighborhood, from my perspective point. If you go in, it's a four-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bathroom house, an open concept downstairs.
So this is A3.
Counselor, you have to talk into the microphone, because for the record, and people do watch from home.
I'm just flipping over to page A3 of House Plan 1.
So you have an unfinished basement downstairs, then if you go on the next page, A4, when you walk in, on your right-hand side, you have the garage, you walk into the foyer, you have a powder room, and then you have an open concept family room, dining room, and a kitchen, and a dinette, and then you have a mudroom. On this side, when you go upstairs, you have a master bedroom in the back with some fancy ceilings, then you have a private bathroom for the master bath, and then you have another additional three bedrooms, and another bath, and the laundry upstairs also.
So Mario, just to point out, this area in the front is open above the foyer, to give like, just some openness?
Yes, the front is open with a chandelier that's going to have.
And then this is House Plan 2, correct?
Yes.
So can you point out to the board what you designed differently, so that both of the homes...
It has, this house has a different criteria with the windows, and the way the front is designed is a little bit different, has some moldings that's going to be different, the garage door is going to be different, and then the front, the front also, it's going to be different compared to the other house. It has windows on the side of the doors, which the other one doesn't have, and then if you go on page A3, it's an unfinished basement also, and on page A4, it's opposite side of, it's laid out different than the other house. It also has, it has the garage on your left-hand side, and you walk into the foyer, the stairway is a little bit different than the other one. You have the mudroom, the powder room, and the kitchen and the dining room are all open concept with a sliding door to the backyard, and then when you go upstairs, you have also four bedrooms, and two baths, and the laundry also.
And Mario, is House 2 the one that was slightly higher because the tray ceilings in the master bedroom?
Correct.
Okay, I think you're agreeing that if there's, on the design of the front elevations, it needs to meet whatever our likeness works, or they can't look alike, or whatever.
Yes.
Okay, does any of the board have any questions, Fred? Okay, so seeing, you guys stay there, at this point, I'm going to take, do you have any other thing further for the board?
No, I mean, I think the proposed change, moving to seven on 10 on the roof, is going to pick up three to four feet, in terms of reducing the height of both houses, so it seems like a good recommendation.
I for one would be more comfortable hearing from a licensed architect on that issue.
He's on its way here, so...
But, he's not here.
Okay.
We can adjourn them to the end of the night, and...
I could, we could take the other app, adjourn it to the end of the night, but I, what is the architect going to add?
Well, I mean, the whole point of having a professional architect here is to confirm, because if we're going to lower the roof, we don't know what that's going to do to the rest of the design of the house. Because when you look at the front as it's designed, that roof pitch is there for a particular reason, and now we're going to flatten it, we don't know what other impact that's going to have, interior or not. We may be looking at a whole redesign of both houses.
I, no, I think you need to hear, right, I mean, there's no usable space under there, but again, I think aesthetically, you'd have to hear from the architect about the impact on that.
Okay, so what we're going to do is, we're going to, let's hear from the public, and members of the public, but know that, okay, any members of the public that wish to speak on application?
Actually, before we get to the public, because I think Scott had raised an issue that I had also, which was the location of the driveway.
Yeah, I mean, we never got, we talked about the criteria of subdividing the lots, but we didn't talk about the placement of the structures or any of the other supporting infrastructure to develop this. So, I mean, specifically, my concern had to do with placement of driveway versus where the neighbor property is located, because I believe this same issue came up in a prior application earlier this year. And the other specific is the, you know, we, I said the word landscaping, and I think the conversation went a little bit tangentially, but I'm talking specifically about a buffer at the rear between the Board of Ed property and the, and the two residential properties here. So, I'm not, I'm not seeing that in the plans anywhere, so...
I think they did say they would put landscaping, but why don't you show the driveway points? Scott makes a good point, Mr. Witness.
Okay, Mr. Miola, can you just point out where the existing driveways on the property are today?
Yeah, the existing, the existing driveway in the northwest is basically right along the property line.
Will you stop for one second? Do you mind moving over? I want the public to be able to see it, so that way...
Yep, I'll stick down.
Sorry.
That driveway wraps around to the garage in the rear, and then comes out, and then there's a large paved driveway area that comes out on the right-hand side of the existing home. So there's two driveway cuts today. We're proposing on closing them and putting in two driveway cuts. The garages are straight in from the street, so there would be no horseshoe driveway, excuse me, and it's, they're both, let me get you a distance. Okay, they're both about 15 feet off their property line, adjacent to neighbors, and then between them, they're about 20 feet off that common property line that we're proposing. So they're, they're much further in than the old driveway that was there.
So the two, the wraparound driveway that was there, I'm assuming historically had some use for commercial vehicles needing to get to that garage or something, and by reducing, I guess you think it was from 46 to 30-something percent, you're reducing the impervious...
Yes, we're reducing it dramatically.
Okay, good.
Yes, and just to be clear, Fred, as stated in the memo, the applicant is stipulating that they will do additional landscaping, buffering in the rear, as well as replace the fence.
Okay. Does this satisfy our board?
Correct.
Mr. Miola, where is the driveway located on Lot 9? If you're facing the property, is it on the right or left side?
I do not know.
And is, just because, I mean...
It's to the near side of the property line. It hugs the property line.
On the left, of the applicant. Because what, because effectively, what we're doing here is, we are imposing a burden on Lot 9, whereas there had been a large open space next to Lot 9, we're now dropping a second house there. And then to also be putting the driveway right up against that property line, to me, raises some questions as to why the driveway, why it's not reversed, and the driveway is on the left side as you face the house on, on the new house on the right.
I mean, we could flip the driveway that side, and I apologize, I said I didn't know. My survey crew did a good job, they got the driveway marked, it says adjacent driveway. So that's about three, four feet off the property line. If you want me to scale it, I'll get you a better number.
But the point, the point is, is that you're going to have driveways basically running next to each other effectively.
Well, there's going to be 15, 18 feet between them.
Well, right now, there's 60.
Well, right now, the existing driveway that's there is 20 feet off, and where it bubbles out, it's only 10 feet off the property line. But again, we can flip the house, it's not a problem.
I just think we have to balance.
Right, well, that's what I'm trying to figure out, is balance.
Let's hear from the public, and then...
I agree, I think we need, need an architect here, and I would suggest we can do the public, and then we are there to adjourn this to next month.
Or we can carry, we'll take the next application with the architect, and we'll do it before the...
Well, no, I don't think we should.
But let's hear from the public. Any members of the public that wish to speak on application 11-2019S15, let's come forward? Please state your name.
Hi, good evening, my name is Denise Garan, I'm at 26 Clinton Avenue. I actually have made a whole list of talking points that I have, is it okay if I lecture?
Sure. Let me swear in first. Raise your right hand, please, do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth of proceedings before the board ties up, you got?
Yes, I do.
Can you tell us what your lot number is?
I believe it's...
No, I'm 26 Clinton Avenue.
81, 816. We got the address and the block and lot on our sheet.
It's like a little bit...
It's block eight, lot eight.
Lot eight.
On the same side as the...
On the other side, across the street.
Okay, so you're on a 50 by 100-foot lot?
Yes.
With a 100-foot right away next to you?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm also speaking for my neighbor across the street. No? Okay. So these are my talking points. I'm a little bit perturbed about the, we have our garage at the top of the street, and the orthodontist, which is bringing in a lot of additional traffic, and I know you're thinking that people are parking in the orthodontist's parking lot, but that's not necessarily true. So there's a lot of traffic going on at that corner to start with, and parking in front of my house, which is two-hour parking, which is not necessarily enforced, has become a bit of an issue, as we're trying to juggle our cars. We're putting two houses on a lot that was initially zoned for one house as far as we know. So, now we've got this big piece of property, and I look around at Pitt Avenue, and all the development that's going up, and some of it's just so beautiful, and here we have the opportunity to put a beautiful house on a big piece of land, right near the town that we're developing, near public transportation, and instead, we're taking that lot, subdividing it, and squeezing two houses on. And it's not going to be in keeping with the look of the neighborhood, in my opinion, starting with just the sheer fact that it's new construction, and my house was built in 1926, I believe, as are the other houses. I get it, that it has to be new construction, you know, that's what's going up, not going to blend as well, but it's going to be like two barrack-style homes next to this neighborhood, which actually is a dead-end street. It's not quite in the neighborhood, there's no flow. The houses are going to be 26 feet wide. That was a very narrow homes, I personally don't like the sound of that, with 8-foot side setbacks, so 16 feet from wall to wall. The zoning wasn't placed before this property was purchased, the builder or whomever's coming in knew this. There's no need to put this in. This is benefiting a builder, or, in my opinion, but not necessarily the residents of the street. We're not, a variance is not being asked so that a neighbor can improve their property for functionality or beauty, but the property, by somebody who doesn't live on our street. And it's a small little street, what did we say, 23 homes? I think if you were to have one nice house be developed, you'd have no pushback from the community at all. Now, I don't know how much this actually weighs in, because I know it doesn't calculate out exactly, but according to 2017, NJ.com, the data says that educating a child in Springfield Public Schools is $19,050 per child, figuring two children per house, puts us at $76,200 in educational costs, minus, I don't know, I'm making up a number, $12,000 a year in taxes, approximately, for two houses, so $12,000 each, approximately half of that goes to education, the education budget. So even in that sense, it leaves us with the short run. I know it's a little too daisy, but it's out there. The Welsh Farms Development across the street raises huge red flags to me. That is just, to me, it's an example of, you know, I'm from Staten Island originally, and I lived on an island for 30-something years, that had, surrounded by ocean, had the opportunity to be developed nicely, and I lived through and saw what they did to that island, and when I heard about the development on my street, the hairs on my back stood up. I thought, this is exactly what happened. It's not like someone's coming in to put one house, it sounds like a rose of houses. So, parking, which has come up a few times, is definitely a concern of mine, having lived in a previous area where they put a pound with no parking. So I'm just like, a little nervous about that. But most importantly, 14 years ago, I moved into Springfield, and I just loved the feel of the town. It's a small community, I live in a little neighborhood, it reminds me very much of where I grew up, I have wonderful neighbors, it's just a nice feeling, nice people. I would like to keep the look of that town, of that street. I would like, if I wave my magic wand, a single-family home, developed nicely and beautifully, because I know on paper, everything looks a certain way, but I'm going back two years to the church field, and I'm sure all sorts of studies were done about runoff, I'm telling you, there's runoff. There's extra water, water coming in at times, which wasn't there before. So sometimes, it's not just about what's on paper, it's about the feel of the community. And from my perspective, this is not what I'm looking for from my street. And I'm hoping that I have other neighbors here, people speak up and feel the same way. And they thank you very much for your time, and feel it's me for your hard work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public that wish to speak on this application? Absolutely. Come forward.
Hi. My name is Ray Huff. Ray? Ray Huff. Put your right hand up. Speaking of microphones, as you can hear in the back. Just speaking of microphones, your address. Ray Huff, I reside at 23 Clinton Avenue.
Ray, put your right hand up, but do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth of proceedings before the board ties up, you got?
Yes, I do.
He's the lot right next door to us. Just before you start, can you tell us which lot that is?
Five.
8029, he's the lot right next door.
So directly across the street.
Five, directly across the street.
Across the street.
No, adjacent to us.
Next door.
Next door, Lot 9.
The driveway.
Oh, good, Lot 9, perfect, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Huff, tell us what you want to tell us.
Well, I guess first, I want to ask the question, why? Why do you want to build two houses on a lot that has a zone for one house? I'm quite aware, I'm sorry.
You can ask him.
Ask him.
I'm not, I'm, no, I'd just like to finish with that.
Right, I got you.
It's part of the statement, a part of the question.
Got you.
There are many areas nearby here that are zoned for building two or three houses on a lot, without getting a variance. They're there. It is fine. I don't know if the board is aware of the present house now, at 15 Clinton. It's a very attractive house, and I say that because recently, it had new siding, new windows, a new roof, very attractive house, beautiful doors, if you get a chance to pass it. And I know the interior needs work, from what I'm told. I know sometimes in the, in the businesses, what they'll do is, they'll gut a house, the interior, make it to the way maybe a prospective buyer would like it, and then you have a beautiful house still there, not only on the outside, but the inside. Living on Clinton Avenue, it, we get a little bit more noise, but there's many advantages. We have public transportation right at the corner. We walk to churches, temples, schools, public library, post office. In fact, I could have walked here tonight, but it was a little too chilly. So it's a great area, and I would just like to see the neighborhood maintained, and I don't see any reason why, the two houses that really, it sounds like they're going to be squeezed together, they're not going to look very, very good, and I think if you want to do that, you find a place where it's already zoned for that. So I would ask the board to consider that, and hopefully, you will come to a good decision. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Any other members of the public wish to speak on this application?
Good evening, my name is Jill Vecchione at 35 Clinton Avenue. Jill, spell your last name, please. Viasen Victor, E C C H I O N E.
She Lot 9?
What lot, you know what lot you're on?
No. Just move it.
I was the one that was subdivided years ago.
6.02.
6.01 and 6.02, okay.
The original. My, my parents were actually the owner at the time.
Okay.
I had that subdivision, so...
Yeah, no, Glenn has...
Would you please raise your right hand?
Oh.
Thanks, Jill.
Sure.
Do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth of proceedings before the board ties up, you got?
Yes. My, my concern really is the congestion, the parking. This property is located right at a bend in the street, and it just is very awkward And it just is very awkward sometimes driving there. Cars parked on both sides, that's fine, but it would just make more congestion. And just having more traffic on that street. Perfect example was a couple of weeks ago, we had Halloween. St. Clair Avenue was closed off, no traffic allowed on that street. Where did everybody park? On Clinton and walked across to go trick-or-treating, which is fine. I'm all for the safety of the children, of course. But now, this is one example, just showing how traffic is a concern. One day during, one year during the parade, the Memorial Day Parade, a New Jersey Transit bus was directed to go down our street. As Denise said, it's a dead end. So, you're just adding more congestion now on a street. I can't handle it. It's a small, narrow, dead-end street, so just putting two houses there at an awkward spot on the street is going to make, I think, a traffic hazard possibly. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you for your time.
Okay.
Any other members of the public wish to speak on this application? Seeing none, I'm going to close this to the public. So, councillor and the board, you know, how do you guys want to do? Do you guys feel that we need the architect? Okay, so then, do you guys really feel we need the architect?
Yep. I'd like to hear from you.
I'd like to hear from you.
All right, so, from the public's standpoint, I'm going to, we're going to adjourn this application and hear it in maybe twenty minutes, once we get the next application, so feel free to stay here. I'm sorry, we was hoping to get it done so that way. But at that point in time, after the architect speaks, if anyone wishes to come back up again and ask questions of the architect, you know? Yes, well, yeah, I think we do. All right, so, let's move forward.
For the record, this application's going to be carried for probably about twenty minutes, so there'll be no notice. If you want to stay and hear it, you stay, but you're not going to get anything else. It's going to be tonight or not?
Hey, Mr. Keenan, can you review the... Okay, the next application is Application twelve dash two thousand nineteen S. And if I pronounce this wrong, I'm sorry. Jazz Watt Enterprises LLC, sixty Fadham Road, block thirty-eight oh-three, lot five. This is for preliminary and final site plan with both variances. Mr. Disco, you're going to state for this, right?
I'm just getting...
Oh, we saw you running out again.
I know you're running out, because you're, this is more of a you application and planning from a standpoint.
Yes.
Thank you, councillor.
Good evening, Raphael Bettencourt, BRC Bettencourt, Wilkowitz and Julian, one eighty-sixth North Avenue East in Cranford, New Jersey, on behalf of Jazz Watt Enterprises. We...
Excuse me. Excuse me, could you please be quiet? Thank you.
Thank you. The applicant is proposing to upgrade an existing building located at sixty Fadham Road. The property was previously rented, and the owner now wishes to move his personal business to the property, which is a key subcontracting business. There will be numerous upgrades to the property, which you can hear from our engineer. Our architect is here as well, and Mr. Singh is here, who's a principal of Jazz Watt Enterprises. These upgrades include a new building facade, upgraded windows, a new interior layout, and also the inclusion of LEEP certified improvements, such as solar panels. Project's goal is to achieve silver certification. The exterior improvements to the property include ADA compliant parking for slopes and the required number of parking spaces. There's a proposed patio adjacent to the lunchroom, which we're going to be discussing as well. We're seeking two variances tonight. One is, to see both variances tonight. One is a maximum lot coverage variance, and the other one is a maximum fence height variance. The, the, as I've stated, window and awning upgrades, which is a one-story commercial building. I will start out tonight with our engineer, Kevin Page.
Mr. Page, good to see you. Could you raise the right paw, please? Kevin, do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth for scenes before the board ties up? You are, Kevin?
Chief Page, P-A-G-E, President Page, Mariner, Chief of Police.
Kevin, what licenses do you hold?
A professional engineer, professional planner, practicing for forty-six years.
And your licenses are valid as of tonight? And you literally have practiced over most of the state, is that correct?
I, I trust.
Sounds like you know each other.
We have bumped into each other once or twice.
Mike Dolan says...
So have I.
He's just a baby, he hasn't done that many.
Yeah. Any questions for the board?
All right, let's do it this way. I would like to stay with what is within the jurisdiction of the board. The architecture is not so much. Let's get into the, let's get into the engineering, we got Mike here. Let's get into the site plan one-on-one stuff and go from there. And obviously, Kevin, you know how to put the testimony on for the variances. The only question I think that I have just before you start is, are the awnings compliant, or do they need some relief also?
As far as I know, they don't need any relief.
Okay, good. So, it's just the lot coverage and fence height? Mr. Page?
Yes, sir.
Do it.
So, this is our cover sheet. North is up. This is the end of Fadham Road. Anyone who knows Fadham Road knows this is an industrial park. This is the property that's about as far back as you could get, because our northern boundary, northern and a part of our eastern boundary, is where the dike was built to contain the railway river. So, when you look across the back of the parking lot, you're looking at that dike. And that property there, on the other side of the dike, on both sides, both in Springfield and Union, is owned by the Union County Park Commission. This is an existing building, somewhat L-shaped. There's a driveway on the left-hand side, and then all the loading is in the back of the building. So, as you're on Fadham, in an industrial park, not a residential zone, all of that loading area is buffered from the street. And yet, we have commercial buildings on the other side of us. This is our cover sheet, and by the way, just for the record, our drawings were originally dated ten-four nineteen, revised ten-thirty-one nineteen.
Kevin, these are the same ones that are on record?
Correct.
And the pile is part of the application?
That's correct. To flip to drawing number two, on the left side of it, we have a blow-up of the proposed facility, and there's three areas of alcohol work. Starting on the left side, the western part of the building, we're relocating the doorway to this facility. The existing door is near the southwest corner. We're moving it more to the western corner of the middle. When you look at the floor plan, that's because the circulation spine, if you will, the corridor runs down across it. The back of the building, there's two designated warehouse sections, and then most of this will be the, most of the south of the building interior will be the office modules. The other improvement is, is at the south side of the building, so between this building and our building to our neighbor, lot nine, just south, we're proposing a small fenced enclosure for people to come out to have lunch, not on days like today, but on nice days. So, we're basically creating a little outdoor patio area, brick pavers on stone, where people could go out at picnic tables to enjoy lunch. The next proposed improvement is on the eastern end of the building, and again, when you see where Fadham Road is, you cannot see this area, because the building blocks it, is we're proposing an enclosure with an eight-foot-high chain-link fence with slats, privacy slats in them, to allow for the service vehicles, company vehicles, to park overnight. As a client will, as a client will explain to you, he's in the interior renovation business, painting, wallpapering, partition walls, et cetera. What they do is, they load up these Econoline vans, a regular, you know, business van, at the nighttime with their equipment. A lot of the work is in northern New Jersey and New York City, so they want to leave early, like six in the morning, six-thirty, beat the traffic. And so, what they do is, they load up all their equipment and supplies the night before, and they put them in this fenced-in, locked-in enclosure. And so, when the employees come in, they can park their vehicles, hop in their business vehicle, and head out to northern New York, northern New Jersey, New York City, et cetera.
Why six, why not six-foot to comply versus eight?
We want to make sure the fence is high enough to screen the vehicles, to the top of the vehicles. I will tell you, our immediate neighbor to the left, lot four, he also has a fenced-in facility, and that fence that runs down our property, common property line, is an eight-foot-tall chain-link fence. So, we're doing it for security purposes, and that's why we're locked in it.
Thanks.
Other than that, it's pretty simple. We have modified the parking layout to provide the five handicap stalls, and we've provided a handicap ramp for them. We currently have one hundred and nineteen parking spots, we're going to go down to one hundred and fourteen. We discovered with the survey that part of the asphalt actually encroaches on a county park commission property. We're removing that encroachment. But the reality is, he has sixty employees. He has three to four visitors maybe a day, salespeople wanting to sell him something. And I don't even count the five handicap spaces, because generally they're not used that often. So, we need like seventy. We have one hundred and fourteen spots. Deliveries will all be coming in the back. There's two, two pairs, so four docks, of loading docks already that exist in the back of the building. The only thing I will tell you is that one or both of those pairs will be modified with a pre-manufactured ramp, because the loading docks for any tractor-trailers, you might get three tractor-trailers a week to come to the back. But then the vans, they could drive, you know, back up, up the ramp, and get loaded on, and then park for the evening.
Let's cut to the chase here.
Sure.
The only reason you need the impervious, the lot coverage variance is because you're adding the luncheon patio, is that correct?
Correct. And we've designed the patio to be on a stone bedding to store the excess runoff. And by the way, we're not counting the fact that we're removing asphalt, because we shouldn't have had that to begin with.
So, what's your percentage, if you're removing asphalt, and you say here...
Well, I'm...
I'm looking at Michael's report.
But the asphalt they're removing is not...
Yeah, and I'm not counting it.
We don't want to talk, let's not talk about it.
Right.
It's none of our business.
Anything further?
Anything further?
Not... Oh, well, let me say this. I did review both letters from your professionals, your planner and your engineer, and we have no difficulty satisfying either of them. The one thing that Mr. Disco asks is that we move our fence location, gate location for the enclosure, so we're not trapping the manholes inside the enclosure? And we've agreed to do that.
Perfect, okay. I think we're good. Mr. Keenan and Mike, anything further?
No, in addition to moving the northern fence line, I asked Mr. Page if they, at the request of the Public Works Department, they requested that on the southern, if maybe Kevin, Mr. Page could point to the manhole that I'm talking about?
Sure.
On the southern side, right there. Public Works asked that a gate, double gate be placed there instead of the fence, in case they've got to access it after hours, and the gate can be opened, and they can access it.
We have no objection to do that.
Okay. Anything further from you guys? Anything from the board?
We're good.
No, we're going over it, Mr. Wishden?
So, my only question was, you're reducing your parking by eight spaces total?
Five.
Oh, five total, okay. Was there any consideration given to reducing more, given you're not coming close to utilizing them all and being able to maintain the...
If this was, if this was, if this was a new project, and I was building from scratch, I would in fact ask the board to let me bank these spaces, meaning don't make me build them. But since this is basically a parking lot in perfect condition, I don't want to rip them up, because fine painting may not be here ten years from now, and I don't want to rip it up and have to put it down.
Makes sense.
So, we meet your code. I want sort of leave it enough well alone.
No question.
You know, you said where you're having a picnic area, and where the trucks are, it's not going to be any blacktop, correct?
No, where the picnic area, no, no blacktop.
The back over there, in the back.
Well, this already, where we're parking, that already has blacktop, we're leaving that blacktop. We're not expanding the blacktop. We're only, in this little picnic area, we're putting pavers down on a stone bed.
I just want, we're trying to get rid of impervious surfaces.
I understand.
Cut it back as much as we can. I understand you're taking some away. I'd like to see pavers over there also, where the trucks are going to go in and out.
It's already asphalt, we're just using the existing asphalt.
But you are removing asphalt along the, along the...
Yes.
Eastern, so you will be reducing asphalt.
Not on their...
Not technically on their property. Right, but overall, within our world.
Correct. I do want to count it though, because it shouldn't be there to begin with.
Me either, Sharon?
So, just to be clear, on the new patio, that's going to be pervious material?
It is.
So, while you're adding coverage, it's not going to affect any runoff or anything?
Correct. We've actually submitted drainage calculations to your engineer.
Anything further?
I have one final question, Senator.
Yep.
The boards granting variances that we're seeking, are not substantially harming the public or the public?
No. And the location of them specifically, because you can't see them from the road, other than a little enclosed patio, you can't see these things. They're all behind the building.
Okay. Perfect. I don't think we did hear anything further. Any members of the public wish to speak on this application? Seeing none, I'm going to close this portion of the board. Board have any questions, concerns?
No.
No? So, there are two variances that the boards would have to grant. The first one is for lot coverage, and the second one was the height of the fence. I think personally, they made an argument for the fence being height, that it's secluded in the back and it's being done for safety. Can I have a motion to...
I'd like to make a motion to approve Application twelve dash two thousand and nineteen dash S sixty Fadham Road, block thirty-eight oh-three, lot five, for preliminary and final site plans with both variants.
Second?
I have a roll call.
Mr. Spousky?
Yes.
Mr. Barnett?
Yes.
Mr. Huber?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Wishden?
Yes.
Vice Chair Castle?
Yes.
Chair of the House.
Yes.
The only additional condition besides Mike and Keenan's report would be, they're going to put the double gate in on the southern side.
And for the board, yeah, that's good.
Did you get county planning board approval?
Yes.
Did we have, did you get that in the file? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so going back to Application eleven dash two thousand nineteen, is councillor here?
They're gone. Yeah, they're in the hall.
Oh, they're waiting. They're still waiting?
Jen, do you mind just seeing if they're ready? Yeah, wait. Wait, if...
Okay.
If not, we'll... I want to take a break between the two apps for a minute, but let's see if they come. I know I have to... Councillor? Is your architect here? Okay. Let's bring him up and swarming.
Do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth for scenes before the board ties up?
I do.
What is your name, sir?
Yuval, Y-U-V-A-L, Welsh, W-E-L-L-I-S-C-H.
Sir, you're a professional architect, Mr. David Gerzey?
I am.
Who are you employed with?
I'm sorry?
By whom are you employed?
Self. I've been before this board a few times.[1748.14]
And your license is still valid as of tonight?
It is.
Is it okay with everybody?
Yes.
We follow what the question, um, the applicant's request. Can you, the need is to, 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 to,[646.12]
Plus more coming down Mountain Avenue that these are going to be, these would be sticking up.
Can definitely do it and it will look very good. I mean, I usually use here in Springfield, anywhere between eight and nine pitch.
Yeah, can we talk about the driveway on the side and how it impacts the neighbors and potentially how?
That'd be engineering.
The architect was going to, was said to flip it, so-
The engineer said you could flip the driveway where you'd have the garage on the other side of the home.
We could.
So that way the impact of that lot, as Mr. Schwartz brought up, would be, the driveway would be running along the lot.
We could do that too. Sure. No impact whatsoever. Same house on the left, right? Sure. Siding and some stone, which is common material in this town. And we want to try to keep as colonial as possible. This side of town is definitely more colonial than what we were trying to do. So basically, what you can see, there's a stone on the bottom, just to keep it, you know, more protected from the environment. We don't want to see any exposed concrete. We have roofs over here, which we'll use asphalt roof like most of the houses in this neighborhood, and siding. And the main roof, which will be the same material. So basically, I do in Springfield at least five or six houses a year, and this will not be any different than that.
Anything further?
The architect, no. I just would like to have Mr. Miola clear up something regarding the driveway as well.
Sure, one second. I would like the board to have an opportunity.
Now, let's let him just finish and that way they're done. And then you can ask all the questions you want. Just do it. One sec.
Sure, go ahead.
Fred, where do you want to go up?
Turn it around?
Mr. Chair, I would ask that the architect just look at the footprint of Mr. Miola's plan, the building footprint, or allow the building footprint. If he were to flip the house, that it would fit.
Yuval?
There was any impact. Since this is a non-rectangular-
This house will split the mirrors and-
I believe it will, but I don't-
Right, but it's only the one on the right.
Yes.
The one on the left stays the same.
Understood.
I don't have anything to add.
Do you have anything to add?
Fred, where do you want to go?
Well, the driveway is almost on the property line. It's three to four feet off the property line, and then the house has just passed the width of that driveway.
So during the research, he spoke to the applicant and decided, within the house, what else would the applicant willing to put along the driveway?
Oh, shrubs. He was willing to put shrubbery along that property line. I'm sorry.
So again, that would help with headlights layer and noise versus what exists there today, correct?
Presently, with this sorcery driveway, people coming in in the evening, the headlights are on straight across to that house. So by us having a front entrance driveway and then putting landscaping along that property line, we're eliminating that problem or that nuisance.
So you would come up with a landscaping plan for that as well?
Yeah, I'd be happy to meet and work it out with the engineer and the planner.
Anything from the board with the additional testimony?
I'm nothing.
Andrew?
Nothing.
Chair? Okay, seeing none, we're going to open a backup to the public since given public. Anyone from the public that wish to speak on this application to ask the questions of the architect or make a statement?
Only on what-
No statement.
No statement. Only on what was just testified to. You don't have to go back over anything. Only either questions or just to comment on what was testified to them, which was basically, not basically, it's really the pitch of the roof and that they can move the driveway. It's going to be a colonial look, and they're going to put shrubs along the driveway. So it's those five areas, four areas. I'm not going to cut you off.
How many cars?
Name and address.
I'm sorry.
She was in-
Denise Corran, 26 Hudson Avenue. How many cars can be parked through this driveway? Fred, can you answer that question under RSIS standards? How many cars, revealing cars?
A car per drive, two cars per drive.
In one driveway? I'm sorry, on one driveway?
One car. Four cars per drive.
So one car and then one car in the garage. Okay?
Just hold on, that's a good question. And that meets the RSIS standards, is that correct?
No, because I heard four bedrooms, you do say you need one more car. So it happens wide in the driveway. Basically, if you're climbing on, you get the second car.
So you're going to do that, is that correct? Because I'm not asking for relief from the RSIS.
I asked you for the RSIS.
Okay.
But the short answer would be two cars in the driveway and one car.
And how will that affect lot coverage and drainage?
It would tick upwards.
Well, obviously.
It would still be less than existing. You wouldn't have to mitigate it. And I had shown in my memo, they could go about five feet wider and still be okay. Up to the limit of lot coverage. The alternative is if they moved the building back about two feet, they would have the length to the sidewalk to get the car stacked. So there are two alternatives on that.
What do you suggest to the board as a, you know, we have to-
Obviously, if you have two cars, you probably want them side by side rather than jockeying them and-
And plus it keeps the backyards bigger.
Eleven o'clock at night, moving them out on the street and some, you know.
And plus it keeps the backyards bigger as they were concerned with the narrow-
But there are alternatives.
I think, I think making them bigger as opposed to setting the buildings back would probably do it better.
My next question was, the architect was asked about the height. I think it was three times, and three times the answer, hundred thirty. So I interpret hundred thirty being twenty-nine feet, eleven and a half inches? I wasn't clear about that.
That would-
Or is it like twenty-five feet, which is what I heard earlier, if you're keeping it in the neighborhood? He asked three times that, so I thought I was going to do this.
I think the board, if they grant it-
What's the height going to be? You're the architect. Is it going to be twenty-five? Is it going to be twenty-six? Is it going to be twenty-seven?
Twenty-nine.
Guess that's the answer he's giving.
The twenty-nine feet. Eleven and a half inches. Okay. If we had, we have a zone at sixty feet? I'm sorry, a zone at sixty, whatever that means.
Yes.
The zoning is not, not my field. If we were to build a one family home, would it be possible without, without a variance, without the separation of those variances?
Absolutely.
Okay. And what is the current distance between each house on average, on the street? So there is a close range. It's not even, and I live across the street from this, about one house down. So from my perspective, it seems like significantly closer. How will it be closer than what's currently on the street? So it's not in the character in terms of height, the house width, the separation of houses.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening. I'm sorry, um, people, can you confirm? Just for clarity and safety of the answer, if we were to delay that house, would it be no higher than twenty-nine feet?
Yes, we can do that.
Can you repeat, can you repeat that one more time, please?
Will be no higher than twenty-nine feet. So it won't be twenty-nine point five, twenty-nine point eleven, but be no higher than twenty-nine point zero, possibly less.
We can make it exactly one year.
That's fair. Okay. Thank you. Anything further from the public?
So I just wanted to clarify about this. I'm investing here, this is my neighborhood, so I'm raising my child. So if we're saying twenty-nine, no higher than twenty-nine point two, twenty-eight point eleven and a half, that's what I'm saying. What we're, what I'm hearing just seems to be not in keeping the height of the houses in the neighborhood. Just drive down the street.
If they built, but if they built one big home, they can build a thirty-five foot house and it would be even towering. To me, having a twenty-nine foot is a compromise as opposed to if you're worried about the height of the homes?
It's not really that. I think what I'm more worried about is that we're taking a cute little street that's in a nice little spot like near the town, and we're putting two houses in this lot. It's not really designed for houses, which wise as variance is needed. If I were to wake up tomorrow morning and find out there's one nice house being built on the street, personally, I'd be very happy with that. I think that's fantastic.
So just to be, I just want to clarify. So if they built, if we deny this application and they come back and they want to build one of these McMansions, where they have the absolute space to do it because it's a large lot, they could build something that is going to be three times the size of the next three houses. You're okay with that? You prefer that to two houses that more or less match what's already there?
Well, I think what you're asking me is like assessing on plans I haven't seen as compared to plans that I went into town to see.
Yes, I am, fortunately.
Right, so I would have to say, I'd have to speak to my bailor to find out whether there's property value, and I would, I would personally like to walk and see.
You wouldn't have any, you wouldn't have any chance?
And that's the problem, is that they can do that without any variances, which means they don't even need to come to us to do that. They just have to go to the engineers and get the approvals because they can satisfy all of our ordinances. What you have here is an opportunity to control what goes in that lot. And right now, they're talking about putting two houses that more or less match what's there now as opposed to one huge McMansion, which is going to be totally out of character.
Thank you.
And as a member of the public who lives on that street, I'm interested in which way you would go.
I'll sit down and think about it for five minutes while we have to put back on the list. I, I'm just, I'm just going to say-
I would like to be done with it. But I, I need to put you on the spot because we're going to close this and we're going to vote.
For me personally, I think I probably would prefer to have an agreement.
If I could help the board, the lot size is twelve thousand three hundred, the building coverage is twenty-five percent one quarter. You could have a footprint of about thirty-one hundred on the first floor.
Yeah, so six thousand square foot.
Less, less to your garage.
And go thirty-five.
Just pointing it out.
And go thirty-five foot high.
I'm giving you the maximum. I'm not saying it's a viable residential structure on Clinton Avenue.
Sure.
The same-
And there's zero market value.
We're-
That's right. No one's going to buy a house there.
These are just hypotheticals, so let's, let's look at what was presented. And we know the number.
I'm just trying to answer the question.
Yeah, no, thank you. But, but now we know the number from the architect.
All right, so, so do you have anything to summarize further before the board votes?
I would like to increase.
Go ahead. And then I have, I would like to say something to the board.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, obviously, these heights, the application will never take them easily. This is a substantially large lot. You heard the testimony here this evening that we are proposing a minor subdivision that's still going to keep both lots substantially larger than most of the surrounding lots. Both of these lots are over six thousand fifty, where majority of the other lots, nineteen and eleven in fact, are at five thousand or better.
Fair enough.
Okay? We will be reducing the overall coverage on the lots. We will be including the drainage, the drainage, we will be draining the driveway to the front of the home. And even though there was even a concern about the rear yard, if the scale of the rear yard, which required that major ordinances, we're providing larger rear yards than what even required, even if these were perfectly reconnected lots. We're asking the board to look at, or to look at benefits versus the detriment. These are two rear image variance to lot width of fifty, which the tax act shows strongly all the lots are at fifty foot wide, and looking at the, um, and looking at the overall lot size. Again, the applicant took good care in looking at the surrounding, including the placement of the home, keeping them towards the front to give those bigger rear yards. Is willing to do those improvements for the fence, the landscape, and then taking into account his neighbor next to him flipped the house, get the driveway even further away than what exists there today, and to put up additional bark and shrub, plant shrubbery. The applicant feels they certainly met the criteria to see two variance relief on this application, and I think once the neighbors see two beautiful modest sized homes on this property that took into account colonial style, different materials, that this would be an overall improvement to this small street and community. And we're hoping the board will see and grant approvals on this application. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay.
I don't mean to interrupt, I'm sorry. I just want to correct for the record. I believe the attorney said nineteen lots are less than five thousand square feet. That, that is not accurate. Yes, I think that's what she-
Sixteen?
Nineteen lots are less than six thousand square feet.
So before the board votes, I just want to add something. You know, we've had subdivisions in the past, and we've had them where the color coding that our engineer puts together was completely shows that it would be a developer trying to get something in order to, you know, make money or for profit. In this case, I personally think, you know, makes sense. All the lots are, as Mike points out, are undersized in the area and would be even bigger than some of the undersized. You have a service station very close to it, or-
Right next to it.
Right next to, well, across the street next to it, you have the bank. I mean, it's kind of a good potential transition area. I for one think, you know, building a third, building a big, huge, huge home with thirty-five foot high wouldn't fit with the characteristic of the neighborhood because it's, a lot of the homes are twenties and so forth. That by allowing the subdivision controls the heights of the homes to something a little bit more reasonable. Out of all, you know, obviously, we, the last subdivision, we were all very vocal about it because we didn't have the lots within the character. I think that this more fits within that character, but obviously, it's up to the board, so.
It's also smaller square footage total for what you could build now and take to.
Yeah, true.
It's a third less than what you could build.
Putting, you know, landscaping around the property buffers the high school, a fence over there for the high schools so that way people can't come in. You know, so I'll leave it to the board to entertain a motion for any action unless anyone wants to have any discussion.
I'd like to have a discussion.
Go ahead, Mr. Schwartz.
I, I am greatly troubled by this application. I am truly undecided at the moment because the town, since this neighborhood was built, and obviously, this is one of the older neighborhoods in town, I, we have decided in our ordinances that minimum lot width should be sixty feet. And we have a lot here that's one hundred, and we're being asked to reduce, to create two lots that are under sixty feet. And not only is it under sixty feet, they're not square, they're not rectangular. They're, one of the lots is angled so that we are really in the back end of this, the backside of this, a very small lot, smaller than the rest of the neighborhood. I've heard what the public said about the traffic, and I appreciate that they've got traffic issues, but I don't see, on the positive side here for the application, I don't see where any one house is going to, the addition of the house is not going to impact what may be a negative traffic situation. That's just the nature of where they are in the town. But I, I just, I don't know that this actually benefits our master plan and our ordinances. It is contrary to them. Even if ultimately, two smaller houses might be better than a hypothetical McMansion, it is hypothetical. And as to the property owner, the property owner purchased, and as I, this is implied here, a lot with a single house on it. So to deny them the ability to split it and build two houses, I don't see anything wrong with that. They have, they have now what they purchased and what was there when they purchased it. We're not denying them the ability to improve what's on there because what they want to do is create a whole new situation.
Chair?
Well, I agree with Andrew about the parking. I don't think it would have big impact. I am troubled by the application. I think it is, I don't like it. I don't think it is in keeping with the neighborhood. I don't like the size. I don't, I, I just, I don't, I don't like it. I don't think that we are trampling on the current homeowner's rights to deny this application because, as Andrew said, not what he's got. However, the application that was presented to us is a, it's a sound application, and it meets with, within a lot of our, you know, it meets within our, our ordinances. The variances are not unreasonable, so I'm, I'm troubled. I don't know which way I'm gonna, I'm gonna go. I just don't know. How's that for a non-answer?
You must be a lawyer. Two lawyers, okay.
Can you tell my kids, can you do that when my kids want to click the cellphone and give them that non-answer? David?
So maybe I can help a little bit.
Please do.
I hope I can. I'm less troubled by the engineering part of this presentation, this application, than the architectural part. First of all, this was a very poorly presented application. Your architect wasn't here. Sir, when you were here, we got very non-answers. It's thirty, it's twenty-nine. Come on. Asked about the driveway, it's two cars, it's one car. I know that was engineering, I guess. So I would certainly recommend, if any of you come back to this board, please be better prepared and better, better put together to what you are going to present with the board. That being said, I do agree with our, our planner and with the, with the public who came up and spoke. This is very much about the character of the neighborhood, and I do find that, that this board and other boards in town often make their, their decisions based on some of the facts and the numbers. Well, the lot coverage is okay. Variance is, is, you know, fine, but, you know, I think we, we don't spend enough time really thinking about, about the neighborhood, about the neighbors, the character of that neighborhood as it relates to our main roads in this case, as it relates to the side roads and what the surroundings are. I do agree that the ordinance is, is, has a certain, you know, sixty foot width, and we have an opportunity here to, to comply, but we're going to say no, we're gonna, we're going to make it less, and then be out of compliance with what our ordinance is. In keeping with, with the character of, of the neighborhood and what I believe is in keeping with, with, with good planning for that area of town, I'm, I'm, I'm not in favor of this application.
Mr. Barnett? Mr. Huber?
Mr. Huber, thank you. Blocking, I know is a fact. I live on Rose, and I see it all the time over there. Kids park there from high school during the day, and it's, anything that goes on at Mizeal Field, people park there and cut through. I just don't like it. I don't like the application, I don't like it. I question the, the lot and that. I'm just against it.
Nothing to say.
I'm not going to restate anything that anybody on the board has already stated, but I will say that I am conflicted, like a couple of my fellow board members here. There's a reason that these meetings are held in the public and not behind closed doors because personally, if I just looked at the merits of, you know, taking down one older home and putting up two newer ones, to me, if I lived in this neighborhood, I'd probably be in favor of it. But, but these are public meetings, and there's a reason that we're here to listen to what the public has to say. And personally, I didn't hear any member of the public speak on behalf of this application, and that will weigh a lot in my decision.
Okay.
If I could just say one thing, just to be clear, and I'm looking at Kenan's letter, just so we're clear, in granting the variances, it would have to advance the purposes of zoning and benefits of the deviation would have to substantially outweigh any detriments. And that's where I really have the issue, is whether this substantially outweighs any of the detriments.
Okay.
Can I make an application? I'd like to make a motion to deny application 1129-S for 15 Clinton Avenue, Block 802, Lot 10, requesting minor subdivision, both variances for two lots.
I second.
Okay, so if you-
An affirmative vote is to reject.
Reject, thank you. Go ahead.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes, to reject.
Ms. Wieschowski?
Yes.
Committee Huber?
Yes.
Mr. Barnett?
Yes.
Mr. Wischna?
Yes.
Vice Chair Kessel?
Yes.
Chairman Tyger?
No.
Motion denied.
Thank you.
The motion's approved, the application is denied.
We're going to take a two-minute break.
It's on the Jazz One application, we'd like to waive the memorization of the application.
Anyone have any problems with that?
No problem with that.
No problem.
Our windows are open, we need to start.
It's fine.
Say goodnight.
Goodnight. Five minute, two-minute recess. Yeah.